Hello, everyone. If you could take a seat, please. We have a class that's going to be meeting in here at four o'clock, so we have a hard stop so that they can take their place. Welcome, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to see you. Those of you who I've already met know me a little bit, but my name's Kathryn Newman, and I have the honor of being your interim chancellor, something that I have been very excited to ascend to, so to speak. As surprising as it was, for me, it's an opportunity of a lifetime to work with you to make a difference for a campus that I know everyone here cares about very deeply. You know, I've worked for eight different -- in eight different contexts, eight different universities, settings, and the one thing that is really distinctive about this university above all the others that I've worked for is that when I ask the faculty members what they care about, what they appreciate about the university, the first thing they say, almost to a person, is the students. I find that quite remarkable. Many other universities where I've had the privilege to work would get eventually to the students, but they wouldn't start there. And the fact that all of you begin there speaks volumes about the power of this university to make a difference in the lives of the students here, who work very hard to deserve what they have, and who take nothing for granted, as I know many of you did coming up, making your way in the world, and as I did too, as a student. I'm very grateful to our audiovisual team for recording this meeting today, because I know many people weren't able to make it. We want to be sure that everyone has an opportunity to hear this update and to ask the questions that they may have, so this will be posted on the chancellor's website. And going forward, all of the information that we provide, and more, that we don't have time to get into, will be available on the chancellor's website, so that you can understand all the elements of the budget situation, all of the decisions that we are making from the ground up about the allocation of our resources. I do believe it's very important for faculty, students, and staff to be informed about the situations we face, the actions we're taking to make a positive difference. Let me also say that I'm extremely optimistic about the future of this university. The caliber of the people who are here, the students, the staff, the faculty, is second to none. The physical setting, which I know has been an incredible struggle for the last couple of years, is starting to look stunningly beautiful. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the open house meeting for next year's -- beginning of our courting of next year's class. It was mobbed, standing room only, and when I talked to the young people and their parents about their interest in coming here, it was overwhelming. And that suggests to me that the record that was broken this year for the size of the first-year class is just the beginning of an arc of excellence for this campus. The goals that I believe are most important here is to do as well as we possibly can by first-generation, low-income students from underrepresented groups. Many universities improve their metrics along the way by shifting who they have in the classroom. My hope is that we're going to improve those metrics along the way by doing better by the students that this university was built to serve. And that includes the communities around us. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to visit with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. Earlier in the week, I was with the Grove Hall Alliance, an alliance of K through 12 schools that Andrea Campbell, the president of the Boston City Council, is put together or is working with. All around everywhere I go, these community groups are hungry for the attention and engagement of the university. They were so grateful to see somebody coming. They remember their own contact with you here on campus. They are eager to see you in their neighborhoods. And I'm absolutely convinced that the purpose of a public university, maybe the purpose of others as well, but the chief purpose of a public university is to engage with the public institutions around us, to make sure we do everything we can to advance your research, advance our reputation in engagement with the community. And I do believe we're well on the way, or you're well on the way, to that goal. So let me just say that our purpose today is to first enable me to give that little introduction, then to turn to the operating results from last year. We want you to know where things ended up, and the good news is, they ended up better than we thought. Then to look at the operating budget for next year, the goals that have been set for us by the system office, and some of the things that we're going to need to do in order to meet those goals. So I will talk a little bit about the things I hope to accomplish with your collaboration. Then we will preview the planning for the FY '20 operating budget, and then just take your questions and comments. There will be a second town hall meeting this semester, toward the end of the semester, where we'll talk in more detail about the planning process for next year, and the ways in which faculty members, beginning within their department settings, moving up to their deans, moving up to the provost level, moving up finally to my level, will be able to engage in planning for the financial and academic future of the institution. I've actually had a lot of experience developing budget planning processes, which sound incredibly boring, but actually are the essence of trust, the essence of engagement, the opportunity for all of you to engage in the deliberation around the issues that we all need to resolve for the future. So from my point of view, success means that everyone in the institution feels like they understand what our situation is, that they've had an opportunity to voice their concerns and their aspirations, and are involved in that planning process right down to the last dime. In the end, it's my responsibility, as your interim chancellor, to sign off on that budget, and it's my responsibility to report back to you on how every dime has been spent. And that is exactly what we're going to do. So let me turn first to my colleague and CFO, Kathleen Kirlis, to review with us the operating results for last year. Kathleen?
Welcome, everybody. Thank you, interim chancellor Newman, for the introduction to this --
Can we hear okay now?
Okay? Thank you for the introduction, thank you for the start of this town hall. So we're going to start this afternoon by talking about the fiscal '18 operating results for the university. We've now had the opportunity to close out last year's fiscal year, and we'll be reporting to the board at the November A&amp;F meeting about the results from our campus. And I'm happy to report, as chancellor Newman mentioned, that we finished the year better than we originally had hoped. So you'll recall when we had the town hall last year, we had set the budget with a $5 million deficit that was required to begin to close the gap that had existed earlier with the university. So what we did was, we started the year out planning the budget, and you'll recall the process we had for a $5 million deficit. As the year progressed and we worked through the various activities during the year last year, we were at the end of the third quarter, which would have been the end of March, reporting to the system office that we were on target to have a $3 million deficit. Well, the good news to report here now, this fall, is that we actually finished the year better than that, and we are finishing with a $2.3 million surplus. So I will talk -- so how did that happen? So when we were here in last October, we were originally planning for a $7 million deficit. So we looked first on the revenue side. Revenue wound up -- we had a number of things that went on last year. We did have a little bit lower enrollment than we had thought when we did the budget. Our summer revenue, we had to take into account as well that was down. So altogether, when we looked at the revenue, we were down from what we had budgeted by five and a half million dollars. But we had taken a number of steps on the expense side of the house as well. So we had personnel savings, as you know. We had to take a lot of really difficult activities last year to get the budget structurally aligned. We had the voluntary separation incentive program. We did have reduction in force. With less employees, our vacation and sick leave balances were lower, and really, we took it all about concentrated effort to really manage our personnel budget last year, and that created $7.8 million of savings from the time we talked a year ago. And then also on the non-personnel side, we also continued to work across all the areas of the university to reduce costs there as well, and likewise, finish the year lowering costs there. So when we got done there, even though we hadn't quite hit the revenue targets that we originally planned in the budget, we did have cost savings to offset those. So we were able to finish the year with slightly positive operating income. How does that look trending-wise? So the last time the university had a positive operating margin was in 2014. So then through '15 through '17, you'll see, we were negative. We had deficits for those years. So this year now, we're back, moving in the right direction, moving towards the system. You'll recall, we want the university to have a 2% operating margin. That's the standard that they hold all the campuses to, and we're working on that over the next five years. So last year, we were able to come through with a 0.6% operating margin. Now, for the next year's, for this current year in fiscal '19, we've planned the budget for 0%. And you might ask, well, why are they planning for a lower amount? This year in fiscal '19 and fiscal '20, now as we finish the construction on our campus, we're bringing all those assets onto the books, and we have depreciation and interest for the newest construction that the university has completed. So specifically, that would be the UCRR project and the parking garage. So we have planned the budget for this year to have a balanced budget, and that was what went to the board in July. So overall, you just wanted to take away from the -- for last year, that, you know, thanks to everybody's work, the hard -- the planning and the work that went through every single area of this university, we were able to end the year in a positive financial situation. Moving on to fiscal '19, which started July 1st, we went to the Board of Trustees in July and adopted a budget for a $436 million operating budget. So this is up 2.6% from fiscal '18. When you look at our budget for this year, the vast majority of it, salaries and non-personnel expenses, are 85% of the budget. And those, you'll see, they're pretty flat. So when we look around, we think, things aren't feeling really a lot better, because our salary levels are similar, and our non-personnel's grown very, very little. Where the growth in the budget has taken place this year is in the areas of scholarships and fellowships, depreciation and interest. So in terms of scholarships and fellowships, I'm happy to report, we opened the residence hall this year successfully this fall, thanks to a lot of work from everybody in this room and throughout the university. I mean, as part of that, you know, we worked hard to get the dorm itself open, but also we invested in scholarships for our students, so that students can afford to come here and live on campus and have an opportunity to take advantage of all that UMass Boston has to offer. So our scholarships, we did put additional money into financial aid this year, and specifically for some living grants at the dorms as part of that. Also depreciation and interest. The university system has a half-year depreciation policy, so when you finish a building and you start depreciating it, the first year, you put half of the costs into your budget, and then the following year, you take the rest, and then you have a full amount for the duration that the building is on the books. So for us this year, between the UCRR project, which is $460 million, and the garage, which is another $70 million, we're taking on to close to $10 million in depreciation and interest that's tied to the construction project. So that's really what's driving the costs here in the fiscal '19 budget, about why they went up. To get into a little bit more detail about this, and we'll post this on, as the chancellor said, on the website, so you can get into the numbers more, but just to give some ideas about what were some of the results of all the budget planning from last year. We do have increased revenue from tuition and fees this year. We did raise in-state undergraduate tuition by 2.5% and 3% for our graduate and our out-of-state students. And that was consistent with what the rest of the University of Massachusetts did, so we were an outlier on that, but we certainly, we did unfortunately have to raise rates for our students. And we did plan for enrollment growth this year to 13,188 full-time equivalents. So we're happy to meet, you know, we worked hard. We had the biggest class ever for our freshman class, and we're now taking steps to really work on how we can also keep, work on improving our retention to keep our current students here as well. Parking revenue, we did include in the budget this year assumptions around parking for $2.8 million of new net revenue. So we do have plans with increased parking fees, as well as the cost of operating the This is part of the budget. We are in good faith in negotiation with our collective bargaining units, which we see here today. We are going to work in good faith to negotiate rates around those garage, and we are looking at ways we can perhaps raise some other money to help pay for some of this. However, as we sit here today, we do have in the budget some assumptions around parking. We also had savings that we were able to -- when we had the voluntary retirement program last year and the reduction in force, we decreased some costs in the budget last year, but really, where the savings comes is from structurally changing the budget to have lower costs going forward into the future. So this year, we were able to realize a number of, almost $5 million worth of savings from that, which really helped us balance the budget this year. And then we also built in vacancy savings. We know that even though we've got budgeted positions in the budget, not all of them are 100% filled all the time. So we do have some assumptions around savings that will be realized as we move forward and work to have job searches and work to hire our new employees that are in the budget. So those are some things that we helped make the budget situation be a little more positive. On the negative side, I've already talked a little bit about depreciation and interest. I mean, close to $10 million this year. If that's, if there's one thing you'd ask about, well, what's still causing problems that UMass Boston for our budget, it's this. The other things that are going up this year are cost of living. We do have built into the budget all of our collective bargaining increases. The state unfortunately doesn't fully pay for all the costs of our pay increases, so there is some additional costs to the university there. We have fully funded all of our vacancies this year. We did really work with academic affairs to make sure that all of our faculty positions that we're hiring for are fully budgeted, so that's in the budget this year. And then we also have some increased costs. The university system sets a fringe rate. A fringe rate is what's tied to all of our employees' benefits. They raised it 1% this year, which was the lowest amount in the last six years, but it still went up a little bit. Also utilities, we do have some new buildings that came online with University Hall that we needed to make sure were fully in the budget. And then the central support is the UMass system. One thing that UMass does is when the state appropriates money to its campuses, they -- every dollar that we spend on personnel, they pay for the fringe rate for the employees that we're paying the state appropriated money to pay for them. So that's about 36, I think it's 36.62% this year. So basically, we almost get a dot, we get $1.36 for every dollar that the state appropriates us the money, if we use it for people. So UMass gives us all the money for our campus, for personnel, and then they charge us the central support for the costs of the central administration at One Beacon. So we have that as well this year. So now what I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to our provost, Emily McDermott, because even though it sounds like, you know, we have a balanced budget and there wasn't a whole lot of new things going on, we were able to make a number of strategic investments. And I will let Emily talk a little bit about them, because they're mostly on the academic side. And then also, I will take a little time to talk about, we did put centers and institutes, the funding for them in the budget as well, and I'll let her talk about that as well.
What am I talking about? Okay. Oh. Addressing bottlenecks. One of the things that we've not always done a great job of at UMass Boston is anticipating the need in September for additional sections of courses that are over-enrolled and building them into the budget. So often enough, we have spent all our NTT money, or budgeted out all our NTT money, and then suddenly, we have to add new sections, and we're over-budget automatically. We tried very hard this year to anticipate where those needs were going to be during the spring in advance of the September start of school. And so over the spring, we were identifying what we call the bottlenecks, the places where students get caught and have trouble progressing towards degree because they can't take the first few courses they need in order to move through their major programs. Many of those, most of those, in fact, are in the College of Science and Math, and where we have not just College of Science and Math students needing physics, chemistry, and biology courses, but nursing students needing them, and SFE students needing them. There's a call, CLA students needing science courses. So we looked carefully at this with the dean's office and the department chairs, and came to the decision that we needed to really just build these into the budget before we got to September. We did a pretty good job of that. I think we put about $600,000 extra dollars into NTT and TA2 salaries to run new sections. These are in science, College of Science, first-year seminars across the university in general, and a lot of English composition sections, because with getting our largest freshman class ever, we had the largest need ever for English composition sections. So we put in about an extra $600,000. The first post-audit this semester suggests that in most cases, we guessed right. In most cases, we needed all the sections, and they were between 95 and 100% full. There were a few cases where we may have added a couple of sections that didn't totally fill up, but that filled up at least to the point of being, not needing to be canceled for low enrollment. So I think, you know, I think everybody worked hard, and it came out pretty close to an ideal solution for students who were able to get the classes, they need the first gateway classes into their programs. 24/7 operations support is more in the student affairs area than in the academic affairs area, so I'm not going to go into detail there. Information technology, two of the things that we decided early on in the budget process for this year were that it doesn't make sense to take cuts. We were taking sort of 10% cuts in everybody's budgets, but it doesn't make sense to take cuts in places where you're trying to build your infrastructure. Two of those places were the library and the IT operations on campus, so we prioritized putting additional resources into IT and into the library. The library used them to restore some of the services they had had to cut over the past couple of years through the lean years of the worst cuts. And the IT department used the additional resources largely to renew the refresh-and-replace computer programs for employees on campus, for faculty and staff in general. They also put investment in for data analytics. We're trying to move into a more proactive analytical world where we will be able to predict ahead of time where we're going to need money, where students are going to fail and need supports, and so forth and so on. So we've set aside money for those purposes. As for faculty hiring, I think you'll all remember, if you're faculty or related to faculty, you'll remember that for two years, the FY '16 budget, the FY '17 budget, we were in a position of largely having to defer many, many of, a large portion of our faculty hires. So instead of automatically replacing faculty whose lines came empty, we were deferring those hires. The result is, we now have, I just want to explain the semantics a little. We now have three categories of replacements. So I call it a replacement if the faculty member who has left the university, if that person's money is still in the budget and hasn't fallen out of the budget because we deferred hiring, that's a replacement. We just take the money that's in the budget for that person, and we reuse it for somebody else. There's a second category there, which is the category of restore, where somebody's money fell out of the budget, or a previous incumbent in the faculty line, that money fell out of the budget in the '16 and '17 deferrals of faculty hiring, but now we want to return and fill that position again. And that's known in the new lingo as a restoral of a line. The third category is, we're still not giving it back. It's still deferred, okay? Among those, in the FY '18 budget, we were able to, we replaced four lines, and we were able to restore 11 lines that had been deferred in the previous two years for a total of 15 faculty searches for eight -- that started, that actually did start this past fall. For next year, fall, starting in fall '19, we have authorized, I think, let me just see, 11 searches, of which two are replacements, and, I'm sorry, of which two are restored, and nine are replacements. There's another, a 12th search that was a failed search that went on last year and didn't succeed, so it's coming back again this year. So our aspiration over the next few years is that every year, we'll go back and try to restore a couple of the lines that got deferred over the past, and we'll be back up in a few years to a full complement of what we had in faculty before the real crunches hit. The other piece I want to mention is that this year, we're doing those 12 searches, but I've also told the deans and the departments that I've held out a certain amount of money for targeted opportunity hires or for what we call two-fers. If you are doing a search and you find two candidates that are just awesome, you can have a twofer by arguing your case that you need two people. Mostly, we're reserving those targeted opportunity hires and two-fers for the purpose of building diversity in the faculty, because we find that our best hope to diversify the faculty does not always come out eventuating at the end of the searches. But if we save money out particularly for that purpose, we're hoping that that will result in better diversification of the faculty. And what else? The chancellor-directed investment, the Civitas agreement. We're moving ahead with predictive analytics, and I think this is going to be a giant step forward towards student success, because this is the vehicle by which we're able to identify students who are at risk for various reasons and whose behaviors over the first semester indicate that they might be gone in the second semester if we don't intervene. So we're moving into that world. We're hoping to get Civitas up moving pretty quickly, maybe even by January. In the meantime, we're doing a lot of things by sort of the seat of our pants to try to approximate what Civitas will give us in a more organized and systematic way when it's online. But for now, we're trying very hard to move to asking faculty to keep track of their advisees, asking the professional advisors to be aggressive in tracking their advisees and making sure that we do everything we can to support students who are at risk to drop out. What's next? Centers and institutes, favorite topic. So we did, at the beginning of the last fiscal year, we did a detailed assessment of the centers and institutes on campus. Centers and institutes defined basically as research institutes, research centers. In the world of academia, nor In the world of academia, normally are viewed as, um, entities that are to a very large extent self-supporting. They bring in external funds to be able to do the work, the very important work that they do. Um, and so, what we found when we did our detailed assessment of about 54, I think, something like 54, um, centers and institutes on campus, is that 17 centers and institutes ran deficits greater than $60,000. Um, and among these, uh, counting all those together, that accounted for a $5 million dollar gap at the university, $5 million of the gap between revenues and expenses for FY17. So, we, we set about a process of consulting with the centers and institutes and trying to put them on what we call a glide path towards greater self-sufficiency. We did not cut the centers and institutes in it, in any specific fashion. I think a lot of the rhetoric on campus has been that we, um, said, "Your, your director position is now gone." And none of that happened. What we were basically doing was saying, "We're trying to identify ways in which you can raise enough money to cover a larger percentage of your costs each year over the next five years than you have been able to, uh, cover with external funds to date." So, and one of the main reasons that we took this action was that we viewed the research centers and the, um, institutes as doing incredibly important work, but work that was not necessarily supportive, directly supportive of our students. So, they, they often have relationships with students and might support some TAs or, or RAs or whatever, but they, they're not directly meeting students. When, to whatever extent a research institute was involved in direct support to students, we removed that portion of their budget from their costs and didn't hold them accountable for filling it. So, if a faculty member was a director of an institute but also taught a course every semester, the portion of the salary of the faculty director that went towards teaching would go on to that faculty director's department budget and come off of the research institute's budget so that the only costs that remained on the research institute budgets were the things that did not involve direct student support. At any rate, um, by doing this, we were able to identify ways, um, in which through a phasing in of savings and then phasing in of additional external resources, the institutes could become self-sufficient over a period of five years. Now, I, I, I want to say, and I don't want to get into the world of Bill Clinton, it depends on what is-is, but it does depend here what zero is. So, we're saying we're putting you on a glide path to zero, that is, to complete self-sufficiency. But I think we all recognize that complete self-sufficiency is not necessarily achievable and not necessarily desirable for some of these, um, mission-driven institutes. And as a result, we're in the process of putting together a task force that will consider the question of what is-is and decide how far a glide path should go towards zero and how far a glide path should allow for a certain percentage of revenues, for example, to be retained, um, in, through state support so that an institute can be sure that they have staff who can write the next set of grants when the first set of grants expires and so forth. So, that, um, that task force is in the making. It'll be announced and working within a month or so. And with luck, we'll then get to a more rational sense of how far we need to cut in this area and how far we can allow a certain percentage of state revenues to go to support the work of the, the research institutes and centers.
All right. So, for fiscal 19, part, you know, we've got some work ahead of us for the rest of the fiscal year to really work to make sure that we maintain this balanced budget that's been planned. So, what should people expect to see over the next, um, the rest of this fiscal year? So, one thing that we're, is going to be introduced is, um, putting out a variance reporting process. So, really is the university works to improve its financial reporting and make it be more transparent and available to all the members of the campus community. We're going to be, um, rolling out a variance reporting process from the, um, Office of Budget and Financial Planning as well as from the Provost's Office with, um, Tom Miller. Um, so here, departments will be getting, um, be able to monitor their quarterly spending, um, compared to the budget and really take a look at things proactively as the, as the year progresses. Um, if there's really big variances from what had been planned as the budget, it'll be time to take a look at it and talk about it. Sometimes there's some good reasons for it that we need to know about. Other times, it's time to sort of, you know, take an assessment and see what we need to do for the rest of the year to get things in, in the line. Um, we'll also be looking at really important parts of the budget on a discreet, and discreetly just make sure we understand what's going on with that. The first one is tuition and fees. Um, the Board of Trustees has already helped us out a little bit with this one. I'm starting with their September meeting, really looking at enrollment for the fall. So, you know, we're really taking a look, see how are we, how are we, how are we progressing against our, our enrollment targets for the fall, for the intercession, for spring, um, for the summer, um, and work with, with, um, faculty and staff on that. We'll also be looking at, um, monthly, um, expense projections for the university to make sure that we're keeping on track with where we are with the budget. Um, regarding the carryforwards, um, carryforwards have been improved this year compared to last year. So, um, there are some carryforwards that were already released as part of this year's budget process back in July, when all the budgets were released at the very beginning of the fiscal year, rather than well into the fiscal year like they were in fiscal 18. So, capital purchases and startup costs, those are already available for, for those departments that have them to be used. And we're going to take a look at, at carryforwards at the, at mid-year to see what else we can continue to release. And the reason why we need to do this is just because of the margin requirements that the system office does hold us to. If we released all the carryforward without taking into account how the current year's going, we could have it upset the margins. So, we're just going to take a look at it, talk with people about plans and try to release as very much as we absolutely possibly can so that plans can progress. And, um, with this, we, you know, we'll be working with folks to ensure that by the end of the year, we'll be back, um, having met the targets, um, that we need to for our budget. Also, to help us meet the budgets, we, you know, the chancellor's worked to set 10 goals that, um, we're going to be focused on to help improve service and I will turn it over to her to talk about them more.
Okay. So, what I'm going to show you now is a set of goals that are a combination of, um, instructions that have come from the president's office and goals that I've set after reading through the documents that have been compiled on this campus over a number of years as various strategic planning committees work through, uh, their own thinking about the future of the campus. So, it was my understanding of what you had come up with or your colleagues had come up with because I was asked to state these goals by July 9th and I started here on July 1st. That didn't give me a lot of time to consult with anybody. In the future, I will have that, I hope, that opportunity. And so, when you look at, um, some, the goals that you see here in red, those are the ones that came from the president's office that are not discretionary and the ones in blue are the ones that are more homegrown. So, as Kathleen mentioned, the first goal, which is from the president's office, is that we have to be able to come in with a zero percentage, um, set of financial results for the fiscal year. It's important for us to understand that the, our sister campuses are being held to a much more difficult standard, a 2% margin. When I originally got my letter from the system office, it also said a 2% margin. And I went back to the president and said, "That would be utterly impossible on this campus. That would, that would require such an enormous degree of sacrifice that I just don't think it's feasible at all." And he was very sympathetic to that and reduced it to a 0% margin. This will not be easy to accomplish, but I think it's doable. And I do think we have to, uh, well, we have to honor it. And we'll talk, we'll, we've been talking about, Kathleen's been talking about the ways in which we will honor it and I'm confident that we can do it. It's going to require a lot of attention to things like student retention because it doesn't help the campus if our extraordinary enrollment management team brings in a stunning freshman class and then we lose people out the bottom. We lose them in their second year. That means a huge hit to the revenue and that is a large part of what has happened here, students' attrition, which has really made it difficult for us to hold on to the kind of revenue that's necessary to run the campus. And of course, there are other reasons why it's bad. It's not good for the students either, um, to, to forego aspects of, of completion of their education. So, we're going to talk about that in more detail in just a minute, but one of the keys to attaining this 0% margin is retention. And that's part of the key agenda for student success. And on that note, part of what we spent a lot of the time in, the deans and myself and the provost over the summer talking about was how we could achieve an increase of 3% to 5% in student retention rates because that is key to the revenue. And I'm going to ask my deputy chancellor, Garrett Smith, to come up and talk a little bit more about something Emily mentioned in the beginning, which is how we're going to come at this goal of a 3% to 5% increase. Because there's no point, there's never a point in handing out goals without also handing out tools and sometimes with making investments to make those tools worthwhile. So, we can't just say to everybody, "We need you to do this" and then give you no way to do so. What I want you to hear now from Garrett Smith, Deputy Chancellor, is how we're going to come at this goal. Garrett.
Okay. Let me just start by saying, uh, for the freshman graduation rate, so the six-year graduation rate that we all track so closely, there have been 15 points of growth in the last 10 years. So, this is a subject, student success, that we've put a lot of investment in, done a lot of work on. Not, not me, I've only been here for a year, but that the campus has really put a lot into. And I think we should be congratulating ourselves that we've had 15 points of growth in the last 10 years. Uh, it's, it's pretty incredible. So, my role is to try and build on that, uh, to do more. Uh, if you look at the first year retention rates, so while we've seen this incredible growth in four-year and six-year graduation rates, our retention rates of freshmen have stayed about the same level for the last five or six years. Um, so I think last year was 78 or 79% and that's where it's been for the last few years. This year, the data's, uh, the institutional research team is still compiling the data and verifying it, but it's not even going to be that good. It's going to be lower. And so, I think that number is, is really our call to action. Uh, it's not only an incredibly important number for our students and for the success of our students, which is really the reason that we're here, um, but it is incredibly important for our financial situation as well. So, to lose 20, 20, 22, 23% of our students after one year, uh, is a monumental challenge that we need to figure out how, how to solve. So, just following up on what, on what the chancellor said, we've set a series of very aggressive goals, very aggressive measurable goals around what we're going to do to retain our students, uh, into next year. So, just on undergrad, uh, there's so much here. This is such a vast topic. I'm just going to give some examples in undergrad for today. Um, we've set, uh, here on the left-hand side, some, some aggressive goals. So, 3% to 5% increase in freshman retention, right? So, grow from around 78% to 81 or 83%. A 2% to 3% increase in new transfer retention. So, this year, we had about, uh, over 2,300 new freshmen and over 1,500 new transfers. Um, and so, those are two different groups we can drill down into and say, "Okay, what, what can we do to help support those students, uh, to, to be retained here for a second year and continue their studies successfully?" And then we've got all the rest of our students, uh, you know, who are already beyond their first year and we've said, "Let's try and get a 1% increase for those groups." And so, accordingly, the kinds of tools and initiatives that we'll be developing will be matched, uh, to the level of the challenge in each of these areas. By the way, each college, each dean, uh, each vice chancellor, all the, all the different units on campus are setting their own goals. Uh, so there will both be individual goals and we'll be working together. Uh, and one of my key roles is to try to coordinate and align and emphasize, uh, what we're doing in student success. And so, Emily talked about eliminating course bottlenecks. We saw coming this, this group of over 2,300 freshmen, uh, through the spring and it required coordination across enrollment management, who saw the, who saw the applications coming in, um, the different colleges and departments who would be putting on these classes in the fall, uh, the finance team and the academic affairs team that needed to, uh, provide the budgets for these courses to be offered. And we had to put all those groups together to say, "Okay, um, there are going to be 190 nursing freshmen this year when there were only 140 in the prior year. How do we make sure there are 50 more seats in each of the core required classes for those students?" Uh, and so, I spent and a number of people spent a lot of time thinking about, uh, anatomy and physiology. How do we make sure that there are 50 more seats in Biology 207, Anatomy and Physiology for nursing students because that's a critical gateway course for them? It turns out, uh, the big lecture hall that that course is offered in is pretty easy to add students to because there were empty seats in the room. But the labs, uh, which only have, uh, roughly 20, 20 students in them, uh, were, were at capacity. And so, we had to figure out, "How do we add to that? Can we add late at night? Can we, we ended up adding on Saturdays. How do we find the NTTs or the TAs to teach those sections? How do we fund those NTTs?" Uh, and so, this work was really about using the data from enrollment management and about course capacity, uh, and from the budget office and marrying all that data together across different functions to offer the student, offer the courses to students. So, there'll be a theme here, um, using data, trying to get efficient in our use of resources to target, uh, needs that students have. If you go and ask other universities who've done well in this, in this field of student success, "What are you doing?", um, there are three really common things that I'm hearing, um, from colleagues at other places. One of them is about predictive analytics and the use of data. Uh, and the next two examples I give are, are two of the other areas. We have hired this group called Civitas, which does this with scores of universities across the country. What they do is they take mountains of your data. So, they're going to pull hundreds and hundreds of variables of data out of our PeopleSoft systems, look at 10 years of historical data and help us isolate and identify students who might be at risk based on, um, based on how they did in high school, based on, um, how they're doing now that they've arrived here, based on their major, based on the courses that they're taking, based on the number of credits that they're attempting. All these variables will be put together and we can then, in a dashboard, um, click and sift and go through these filters and identify students who are unlikely, uh, to return to us for the next semester and then target interventions for those students. And so, I view this as a really key tool that advisors will be able to use, um, to target interventions, really to the students who need them, without having to go in themselves and sift through all the data for their hundreds of students. We'll be able to say, "Here are the students at risk that you can go out, um, and talk to and support and connect to other resources on campus." It's a really, really interesting topic and incredibly powerful and we've been hearing from other schools, uh, the kinds of gains and retention they've had from doing this well. Um, so if anyone wants to go deeper, feel free to grab me, um, but I'll, I'll keep moving for now. The second thing we hear that universities do is they invest in advising. Well, the great thing is we have invested in advising. Uh, over the last six, seven years, we've invested tremendously in advising. And so, this initiative is really about providing more support to the advisors. Civitas, the predictive analytics tool, is an example of a tool that, that we're going to give to advisors to help them do their work more efficiently. Uh, finding common metrics, making sure that we continue to collaborate across colleges to have common practices and tools, uh, is, is really critical to making that advising investment, uh, pay off for our students. Uh, number one, course bottlenecks is about courses that are hard to get. This last one is about courses that are hard to get through. Um, so, again, universities around the country are thinking about, particularly in math. Uh, if, if you look at the data, um, the, what we call the DFW rates, the, the rates of students getting a grade of D, a grade of F or withdrawing from the class are often in the 30s and 40s. So, say 42% in our calculus classes, 42% of students get a D and F or a withdrawal. That calculus class for students in, uh, the College of Science and Math is often a required class and so they need to get through that class. Uh, they need to get a, a strong grade in that class to progress in their major. And if 42% of students are not doing that, uh, well, then we need to, uh, look very deeply at what's happening and try to, try to do better for our students. Oftentimes, it's, it's an issue about preparation. Uh, sometimes it's an issue around supports or about pedagogy. We need to- We need to dig in and figure out what we can do to get better to help our students get through those courses. There are a whole host of courses that are gateways, that are difficult for students to get through, and that they're taking two times, three times, four times, to try and progress in their major. And so, if we're thinking about retaining them and a six-year graduation rate, having a barrier like that is incredibly problematic, both for our finances and for student success. And so, we're digging in with the math department. The math department has been incredibly active already this semester in starting to think about ways that they can innovate their practice to support students. At the top, it says, "We're developing a program of student success initiatives." These are just four. There's nothing about graduate here. There are about 10 or 15 more in undergraduate, and so, hopefully, you'll be hearing more about those from me or someone else in the very near term, but this is just to taste.
Thanks. So, just to reiterate, this is absolutely crucial. It's probably the most important thing that the people in this room can do to make sure that our university prospers and that we're able to meet that zero-margin target. Because if we lose these students, it's tremendously damaging, both to them and, of course, to the finances of the university. But we also need to think about increasing revenues in other ways. So, we have a target from the system office of a 5 to 10 percent increase in online revenue. That can be accomplished in a variety of ways, including working with our system colleagues in UMass online. We are working on a reorganization of CAPS. We are going to and have created a new revenue sharing program with departments and colleges so that there's more incentive, because there's more money to be retained in the units, that they will then be able to invest in growing even more programs, and expansion of campus online programs. So, there's going to be a greater emphasis in online, both as a revenue play and as a way of serving our students, for whom courses delivered online are often more convenient for them and enable them to graduate faster. But this is definitely a revenue play. All campuses are being required to increase their online revenue, and this is our target. The residence halls, we've already done, and thanks to Gail DeSavatino and her colleagues who have worked tirelessly, as well as our colleagues in enrollment management, to make the residence halls a success. I was over there today with one of our most generous donors, giving her a tour of the residence halls. They are pretty extraordinary. If you have not been there, I hope you will go over and take a look. I can tell you, I've never had a view like that in my entire life. I don't expect to ever have a view like that. It's millions of dollars' worth of fantastic view of the water, and when our students get upstairs and look out those windows, it's breathtaking to them. One of them, who was in the elevator with me today, it clearly felt like this was a positive comment on what she deserves as a student. Not that she deserves that view, but that we would, as a campus, build something so beautiful for our students, tells them something about how much they matter. So, this is more than a building, and it's more than a place to live. It's a statement about what our students deserve in the world, and in that respect, I think it's been extraordinarily successful. But it's only 40 percent of the freshman class that can be housed there, and they're only there for one year. So, one of the things I've asked our colleagues to do in the Student Affairs Division is to develop a curriculum on house hunting. It's something most of us had to learn by trial and error, but what is it like to learn about Boston neighborhoods? And what does it mean to create a deposit for a landlord? And what is a residential contract anyway when you sign one? What is a lease? How do you find roommates? I mean, these are all the things everyone in this room, I'm sure, learned by trial and error as you were going through college. But our colleagues, our residence assistants in the dorms have now built a curriculum around this, and I saw it posted on the glass walls when I went through there today. Month by month, they're meeting with all of the students in their suites to try to walk them through the process of finding housing, because I don't want them to feel like they're on their own to solve this issue. They're only 18, and they need some support. This is something I'm hoping we can also deliver for the students who are not living in the residence halls, because everybody's more or less in this situation. Someday, I hope, the campus will have a slightly larger housing stock so that we will be able to at least house students for the first two years. After that, many students prefer to live off-campus anyway. But the retention bump, the academic value of their living quarters, is enormous. It does glue students to the university in very profound ways, which is why I'm so proud, I take no responsibility for this, but so proud of this campus, for putting $1.4 million into campus living grants. That enabled those dorms to be as close as possible to representative of this socioeconomic mixture of the university as a whole. Without those campus living grants, that absolutely would not have been the case. And it says something profound, in my opinion, about the values of this campus, that that investment was made. We have, 25 percent of those students are on Pell Grants. I bet there isn't another university in the country that's done that, and I intend to make full public relations value out of that, because I think it does actually really express something profound about this campus. So, here's to you all. Okay, moving along, fundraising. When I have talked with faculty colleagues who I had the chance to meet already, almost to a person, they have said to me, "Please do something about improving our fundraising capacity." It has been, to be perfectly honest, pretty anemic, and that has hurt this campus. In a city as prosperous as this one, this campus has received very little in the way of philanthropic contributions. So, one of the first things that I did alongside the leadership team is hire a new vice chancellor for advancement, Adam Wise. Adam, are you here? Can you stand up for a second? This is Adam Wise. We stole Adam from Boston University, where he had worked for about 20 years, as part of the team that created a huge monster fundraising machine for BU, something like $1.2 billion. I have told Adam, "This is time for a second act over here." And you know what, people, there is money in that city, and there are people all around the country who I think, if asked, would be generous to this university. I went out to California, I think in my third week here, I had already planned a trip there, and while I was there to visit with my mother, knocked on the doors of a few people who are graduates of this university. I'll bet most of you didn't know that the chief sort of global officer of, what's it called, not Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram, sorry, I'm not much, of Instagram, is a UMass-Boston graduate. That the chief technology officer of SurveyMonkey, one of the most widely-used survey instruments in the country, is a UMass-Boston graduate. That the chief legal officer of Salesforce, massive, the biggest employer in San Francisco, is a UMass-Boston graduate. Well, guess what? Nobody's ever knocked on their door and asked them to support this university. But when you ask them, "Did this place mean something to them?", they say, "Hell, yes." That guy at Instagram, he was an English major here. I want him to come back and tell all the English majors how he got to be such an extraordinary person out there in the world of high tech. The point is this, with Adam's help, we are going to knock on all those doors, and I'm going to barnstorm the city of Boston and remind all the CEOs in this town where their labor force comes from, and why it is important for them to support this public research university. Because the work you do to educate students and to provide people who are mature, thoughtful, critical thinkers, they depend on it, and we depend on them in turn. So, with Adam Wise's help, we are going to target a minimum of $15 million for this year. That's roughly double what was raised last year, and one way or the other, we're going to get to that target. Whoops. Oh, dear. What did I do? Keep going. Oh, yeah? I have to go through all of this? Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay. Did I get, all right, university relations. We are starting a search for a new leader of university relations. This may sound like a bureaucratic thing, but let me tell you, this university has not been able to tell its own story in the media. Other people have been telling a story about it, and it hasn't been an altogether happy one. And while, you know, we understand that all kinds of news has to be reported, it is essential for us to change the narrative about this university and make sure that everyone in the reading public understands what an incredible value this campus is, what extraordinary work is done by you, the faculty, by our staff, and what incredible students we have. They are the essence of the American dream, and I am going to tell that story in every venue I can get my hands on. So, we need a new director of university relations to make sure that that message is delivered in the State House, where it counts more than anything, especially in our common desire to have them help us with the outstanding costs of this crushing historic debt. In the media, I don't want to see negative stories in the Boston Globe. I just want to see relentless, positive descriptions of what you're doing here, because people bet on a winner. They don't bet on losers. They bet on winners. And this is a winning institution. Everyone needs to be reminded of that, and I think that that's been working fairly well recently. So, we need to keep that going. And finally, we are going to be working on a consolidated marketing plan. We want to be sure that as we describe the university and trumpet its virtues, that that's repeated everywhere, repeated in the Chronicle of Higher Education, repeated in the Chronicle of Philanthropy, repeated in the Globe, in local newspapers, in the environs of the Boston City Council, in the State House, and everywhere else. And that's what our new leader in university relations will help us do. Faculty and staff, the provost has already talked about the plan with respect to increasing diversity. From now forward, at least while I'm in this job, we will put 20 percent of our hiring resources every year into the provost's Diversity Enhancement Fund, or Diversity Bank, whatever you want to call it, to enable hiring with her two-for-plan and her targeted opportunity plans. Because if we're going to have a diverse faculty, we need to put our money where our mouths are. Capital projects, we have some exciting opportunities and some unfortunately necessary opportunities. That substructure, it's just got to come down. The drawings are now made, they've been approved, it's going to be absolutely beautiful, but it's going to be a mess while we take down the science building. It has to come down. But what's going to be in its place is a beautiful cascading green lawn from the top of the campus, leading down toward the pump house. And by the way, that pump house, by hell or high water, that pump house is going to be reborn. And when it is, you're going to see one of the most beautiful buildings on the campus. It is going to be stunning, but I'm going to have to barnstorm to raise the money for it, and I will. One of the keys to our success will be the Bayside project. I will have more to say about Bayside probably in about a month, but we're getting toward the end. I devoted a lot of the summer to both drawing up plans, by which I mean basic things like square footage, not plans of exactly what's going to be there, but trying to articulate what I think the campus's values are with respect to Bayside. So, just very briefly, this involves, I hope, attracting industries of the future who will partner with our faculty to invest in your research, open up opportunities for our students as interns, as apprentices, and future job holders in those companies, to provide for both anchor industries and startups in that neighborhood, and to develop a walk-to-work neighborhood with housing probably for our post-docs, graduate students, and maybe some of our more advanced undergraduates. But that's going to be, that is the last waterfront neighborhood in Boston to be developed, and that is an extraordinarily valuable piece of land. And that funding will come to the university and will help us in the future. But it takes time for that money to come across, and it's a long and complicated development process. I hope it happens sometime before I'm a grandmother, but I'm going to, we're going to work on it nonetheless, and I'm incredibly optimistic about what this will mean, especially for our research faculty, for opportunities for them, and for our students as Bayside is built out. To plan going forward, the provost will be leading an academic master plan, along with the colleagues she selected. We need to do a capital master plan, because we're at the end of the last one, as it turns out, so we need to be planning for the future. Again, by hell or high water, we're going to build a new nursing school, because where's Linda? Linda needs a new nursing school, along with all of her nurses. Roaring demand for nurses and health professionals in this economy, and we can't possibly produce the number that we need to without giving Linda and her colleagues a new space. It will take me some time to figure out how to pay for that, but one way or the other, that is something we absolutely must do. Finally, excellence in leadership and management. We need to develop, and I speak now, "we," the royal "we" and everybody, all the other "we's," we need to focus on creating accountability culture. We need to be accountable to you for the money that we spend on administration. We need to be sure that our students and our faculty, when they encounter our administrative colleagues, are treated with great respect, that they are given the information they need in a timely way, that we reduce frustration that comes sometimes from being in the dark about how long a process is taking to accomplish, and that all the way around, we recognize that atmosphere of serving people is part of what keeps people bound to the university. And if they don't find it, that's one more reason why they leave. And we need to be sure that we are promoting the most positive, pleasant, and accommodating culture that we can have. We also need to be as efficient as possible with administrative resources. Toward that end, and the reason this is in red, is that the system office is beginning what they call a shared services initiative. This is to try and reduce some of the costs and increase some of the efficiency involved in back-room office practices like payroll, accounts receivable, procurement. These are some examples of administrative processes that go on on all the campuses. So, is there a way of achieving efficiencies and savings by combining forces across the campuses rather than duplicating them? That is part of what the shared service team will be looking to analyze, and we have a full complement of colleagues who are involved in those discussions, as do all the other campuses. So, these are the 10 goals for this year. They are obviously not to be accomplished by me alone, by any means. So, all of the deans worked all summer long to translate what these goals mean into each college, to set targets that are, in a sense, derivative of these goals, as well as to set targets and create goals of their own, because this is hardly comprehensive. I am incredibly grateful to the provost for leading that process, to the deans for taking such care with it. They have been, I hope, I know, meeting with their colleagues by college by college, with their department chairs and others, to understand what each of those goals means in their context as well. In our next town hall meeting, we will spend a lot of time talking about that planning process, so that everybody understands where they will be able to make their voices clear with respect to how those goals are achieved, both this year and next year. So, that is, now, we've just got a few things about the FY '20 operating budget, and then we're going to take the rest of the hour for questions and answers. Kathleen?
So, the last topic for this afternoon's conversation is to talk a little bit about fiscal '20. So, as Catherine said, we've got goals for this year. We're going to continue planning for goals as part of, it's going to be integrated into the budget planning process for fiscal '20. So, as we start fiscal '20, we, at the very beginning, if we took what we're currently doing, and we took what the system office has out there for the assumptions for the budget, because of the university's capital plan, we are starting out this year with a $7.7 million deficit for next year. So, before we get all worried about this, this is just the very start. So, everything will move on forward in a positive way from here. We do have some changes for next year that I just thought I would put in, just to have people start thinking about as we begin this iterative and deliberative process. For tuition and fees, we do have planned in this overall system, goals across the UMass system, similar tuition increases compared to this year, the 2.5 percent for in-state undergraduates and 3 percent for out-of-state and graduate students. We do have negotiated contracts in place for some of our bargaining units, and we're working on towards them. We do have the parameters for those contracts in place in the budget, so for next year, that would be a 2 percent cost of living increase. We are working with the state to have the state appropriate their fair share of that. So, we've built that into the budget. Bringing on the residence hall on the 24/7, we've got items with the meal plan. And then, we do have these big costs that we're going to work through, the depreciation, the interest, and the remaining cost of living that the university doesn't cover by the state appropriation. But I would stress, this is just the beginning. We are looking at a number of things that are going to help the margin. This isn't a budget-cutting process where everyone should think, "Oh, this is going to be like the same old same old, everybody has to make big, huge cuts." No, we are looking for some items to help us meet the margin that involve lots of activities. As the chancellor mentioned, Bayside redevelopment, we are looking at that, that is underway. We should have some good news around that in the fairly near term. Retention, Garrett spoke a little bit about our preliminary, about some of the work that's underway, they'll be continuing there. I can't stress enough that for all the retention improvements that we make, that's money in our pocket. Those are not budget cuts that we need to make. And our students are successful, because they're able to stay and continue their education. as well. We're working with online learning, as Chancellor mentioned, we're going to be growing online revenue in that with new programs, additions to current programs, working with the central UMass folks online to see what we can offer there. And then staffing and other administrative efficiencies, as we just recently saw with the shared services and other opportunities, there are opportunities for us to reduce some costs, be more efficient, to help serve our students and serve our faculty and staff better, and save some money as well. So, overall, there is a pathway forward, we've already begun it, there's lots of, the future is extremely bright for the university. We will work together to close the gap, and we are going to find a way to move forward in a positive way. Together, we can make decisions on how we're going to move forward, we'll be focusing on growing revenue, it won't just become the expense side just cutting things, although certainly we want to be efficient on the cost side as well. So with that work underway, we'll be in a better position to solve all the remaining funding needs that we might have for the substructure project, and to move forward the investments on the campus, whether a new nursing school, the Pump House, and just investment in student programs and success that we need to. So with that, I would bring this to closure, and I would open the floor for questions and comments that the campus community might have.[681.12][681.12](APPLAUSE).
Somebody want this microphone? Two here, and then we can, yeah. So, floor is open for questions. I'd appreciate it if you could raise your hand up and give me your name, just because I don't know too many people, and we'll see how far we can get. Please, right up there. Maybe people can line up, well, I don't know, maybe that's not too practical. Yeah?
Hi, I'm Neta Argeras, the Labor Resource Center and with the Professional Staff Union. I have both a comment and a question. It's great to hear that there's going to be more Town Halls. As you're thinking about the agenda, the structure for future Town Halls, leaving a time for question and answers during each hour would be helpful. Staff often can't get a full two hours away, so I noticed a lot of staff leaving during the end of the first hour, so I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Here's a question I have, and I think it's for Vice Chancellor Kierlis. I want to make sure I was understanding the numbers that went by correctly, and you won't be surprised to hear me asking about depreciation. I see that our depreciation amount is growing. I know that in the past, I believe last year, I don't know about this year, a lot of that money was also used to pay off unaccounted for interest. Where is that money going for the rest of this fiscal year? And is it going into our reserves? I'm assuming the surplus we ran of 2.3-some million is going into unrestricted reserves to grow our reserves. But what, if, one, is that true, and two, what's happening with the depreciation?
Sure. So the answer to the 2.3 million, yes, that does go to the university, it goes to the overall university bottom line. I would be cautious, I wouldn't equate that as $2.3 million worth of cash, because it is, income is recognized, some of that would be cash. So that does go, you'll, you'll note from, if you go back and look at previous Town Hall presentations, how our reserves had gone down over time, so this is now beginning for us to take a look. And so we have some funding for a rainy day, if something in fact would happen that we hadn't foreseen. In terms of the depreciation, so depreciation is an accounting concept that the UMass system uses, is used in generally accepted accounting principles to be able to realize a value of an asset over its lifetime. So for the additional $10 million that is coming onto the budget, it's going to be used for three things primarily. So the first thing is it's going to be used for the principal on the debt that the university has borrowed. So while the interest expense goes through our operating budget, we pay not only interest, but we also save principal, so that's paying your loan back. So that depreciation, some of the money raised from depreciation is used for that. The second thing that it's going to be used for is we do still have some construction projects underway where we've borrowed money where we're capitalizing interest. So we still have to pay back interest on that, but it's not yet, it's interest that's not yet on a completed asset, so it's called capitalized interest, and we use this money to pay for that. And it's much smaller in the current year than it had been a couple of years ago, because we've now finished many of these projects. And then the last thing that we use this for is for reinvestment into the physical plant. So the idea is that over time, depreciation, your value of your asset's going to go down, so that when it's fully depreciated, you'll be in the position, you'll have an old building, you might need to replace a new one, or you need to maintain your current buildings. So we do have a locally funded capital budget that we're putting into place, and we didn't touch on it a whole lot here in this Town Hall, but we can touch on it at future times, and we'll get some information out about it. But this allows us to invest in our capital plant here. To the extent we have projects that are underway, it would go into the reserve part of our reserves, it's designed for capital projects. And the university system as a whole is really working hard to increase the transparency and accountability around this process, so you'll see, coming out of the Board of Trustees, really asking questions about the campus to hold us accountable, that we have a plan, a fully formed capital plan, and that we'll be investing in some of the deferred maintenance needs that the university has, as well as maintaining the new buildings that have come online.
Next on this side? We'll go back and forth. Yeah, you.
Thanks. My name's Tom Goodkind. I actually want to continue a little bit along the lines of debt and depreciation. It was pretty clear from your presentation, Kathleen, that it's debt and depreciation which is driving the budget at this point, or, you know, puts us at greatest risk of deficits. And about a month ago, a lot of people heard at the Board of Trustees meeting at UMass Lowell, heard the Chair, Robert Manning, say that UMass Boston is going to get around $300 million from the Bayside project, and all of that money will be used to retire construction debt for this campus. This is legacy debt that goes back to the original faulty construction of this campus. A lot of what we've seen here, the UCR, you mentioned in particularly, in particular the parking garage and the UCRR project, that's all legacy debt. And if the $300 million that we expect, or whatever it is, maybe it's 270, maybe it's 320, coming from Bayside, will go to this campus with the purpose of addressing that legacy debt, on the one hand, that's wonderful news. On the other, it seems to completely eliminate any possible justification for putting the burden of this debt on the backs of students and employees. For example, the parking fee increase.[1041.01][1041.01](APPLAUSE). And, and, there is a question at the end of this, but I also want to put, I mean, you can't really talk seriously about student retention while at the same time raising the parking fee, or having a churn of student advisors because of the low salaries we offer. So my basic question is, will you commit, and I guess this is a question really for you, Chancellor Newman, will you commit that all the funds for Bayside will be used to retire that legacy debt, so the burden of that debt does not have to be borne by the students and employees of this campus?
So let me just say this, I completely agree with you that that legacy debt should not be the responsibility of the campus. And by that same token, frankly, it's not what I would want to use the Bayside money for either, if I have a choice. I mean, if I don't have a choice, I don't have a choice. But what I would really like to do is to be able to do what other campuses do, when they have an asset of that value, they use it to move forward rather than cure some negative news from the past. So what I would really like, and what I have been campaigning for in the halls of the State House, is for, yes, I see you up there, is for the state legislature to recognize the responsibility of the state itself to take care of that debt. Honestly, if we have to use all the proceeds for Bayside on that, it would be a tragedy for this campus, because it would mean that the seed corn of the future, of the resources we need to build a nursing school to make sure that we have investment in our laboratories and our, you know, faculty salaries and so on, would all go towards something that nobody in this room, and frankly, nobody in that State House that's alive now, was responsible for, but is, in my judgment, a state responsibility. So here, we do not disagree. And this is why I've been campaigning, I have written countless letters, we have a team of loyal alums who are preparing to deploy themselves again to the state legislators, and I'm not going to give up on that. I'm hoping that we will make some progress so that we have the opportunity to use those Bayside funds to move ahead rather than go backwards. So that's my, that's my plan, people.[1174.42][1174.42](APPLAUSE). And let me tell you that, you know, one person, even one leader, walking the halls of the State House is not enough. If you want to do something that's really going to help us get there, I would love to see some of the folks who have been expressing their viewpoints absolutely understood, totally have their right to do that, come with me to the State House, because that's where the people are who actually can do something about this. They're not sitting on this campus, they are there. And I think it would be very helpful to have your support and make it clear to state legislators that you care about whether or not they commit resources to rectify that mistake.
We've been doing that for 20 years.
Great, well, I would love to have you come with me, because I didn't see anybody else in the hallways with me this summer, but I would love to, and I would be happy to work with you on that, because it will make a bigger, way bigger difference than I can make. And I know you've been there in the past, let's redouble our efforts to join hands on this. Next question, over here.
Hi, I'm Sam Goldstein, I'm an undergrad here. You know, I myself have also been to the State House, you know, to talk about this stuff. I didn't get that invitation. I, I think, you know, I'm a non-traditional student, I've been here for, I guess, longer than the, you know, hoped-for-graduation timeline that we talk about today. And I guess, I feel like over that period of time, I've sort of seen a lot of the cuts and sort of the austerity measures that have been put in place by the state kind of unfold, and I think maybe it takes like a little more perspective than like four years to see it. But I guess, one question I have is, is why, and I, you know, I know that this is maybe a system-wide question, but why is it that the state, or the UMass system, seems to have money for, you know, things like purchasing the UMass Amherst Mount Ida Campus, which, you know, it now is the UMass Amherst Mount Ida Campus in Newton? You know, why is it that, you know, we are discussing like economizing, you know, services across the university system, but when it comes to funding like that, or it comes to, you know, other interactions, you know, one campus gets a new campus, and the other campus is like gutting, you know, the centers and institutes, which I think are honestly, you know, a core part of what UMass Boston exists for, is serving the public good, you know, it, I-
Thanks, yeah, I get it.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, if there's an explanation there, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I doubt it's an explanation you'll be satisfied with, but, for what it's worth, and I'm not particularly pushing this perspective, but I will just tell you that, for better or worse, the system is more of a federation than a system. It is a collection of campuses that are economically independent of each other. And as a result, and I, you know, again, I'm not defending this, I think that the legacy debt this campus was burdened with is something close to an original sin, and should have been rectified long ago. It is not something that anyone here was responsible for, but it's been a burden you've had to carry. I totally understand that. But each of these campuses stands alone as an economic unit, and one can ask whether or not that's the right way to run a system, I'm just telling you, that is the way it's run right now. And so the resources that the Amherst campus had to purchase Mount Ida were resources they had and resources we didn't have, and all to be honest with you, I wouldn't have bought Mount Ida myself anyway. But we should, it would certainly be helpful if we had the resources to take care of ourselves and weren't burdened by that debt. If we didn't have that debt and didn't have to build a new garage, to Tom's point, we wouldn't be in this situation. We would be in, you know, we would still be challenged, because all universities are challenged, but we would be able to use the fruits of your labor to keep building the campus, instead of having to go backwards and build a parking garage for the one that fell down and was hitting people over the head. So I completely agree with you about that. You know, I am not a student of university systems, I don't know how many of them have more unified budgets. My sense is they are not altogether different from this one. And it partly reflects the accretive way in which the system was built. It sort of had one campus and then patched in these others, and was not born as a unified element. Should this be reconsidered? Should this be thought about again? I think there's, you know, there's good reason to think about new things all the time, but that's the answer to your question as to why one campus had those resources and this campus was burdened with the history that it didn't deserve. My job is to be sure we move forward and continue to battle for the resources we need as best I can with your help, and to manage what we've got in an effective and efficient way, so that we build our own future. I do believe, to be perfectly honest, going forward, all universities are going to face with having to be more self-sufficient. You know, back in the days when you were students, the state paid a much higher proportion of the cost of running the university than it does today. And sadly, that's true all over the country. My alma mater, the University of California, is now at 7%. That's shocking. It was almost entirely state-funded when I was a student there. This is, for those of you who are fans of political science, this is what Jacob Hacker calls a great risk shift, and that's what's happened. The risk has been shifted onto the shoulders of the institutions themselves and the families that, who are paying to send their kids here. I think it's time for a rethink of that entire drift, but that's the drift we're in. Next question, right up here.
Hi, I'm Shawna Manning, and I have two comments and a question. The first comment is, I think one of the best incentives to retain students would be if you could guarantee when a student starts that that student would never pay more in tuition as long as they stayed in school. A lot of our students leave because of cost increase, and when the trustees raise tuition in July, after people have already done their financial aid, a $700 increase is often too big a hurdle to absorb. And I think that that would be an incentive where students would prioritize staying in school, knowing that if they quit, it would just cost a lot more when they came back. My second comment is, I have worked here under seven university presidents and nine chancellors and interim chancellors, and I have never seen employee morale as low as it is now. It is, it is really miserable, and you just need to know that, and it's going to take more than telling us we're great for that to change, so I'm just letting you know. My question is regarding the shared administrative services model and the efficiencies. Mark Prebble is now in the president's office, and he used to work here. When he was here, he and Ellen O'Connor, for 10 years, were enamored with the University of New Hampshire model, which basically made, for lack of a better word, secretarial pools instead of individual administrative assistants in offices as a way to be efficient. They were trying to get that implemented here for a long time. Since this is coming from the president's office, I'm wondering if this is the standard they're looking for. And also, when the email came out on Friday, it said to contact your supervisor if you had questions. I did, my supervisor knew nothing about it, I contacted the dean's office, they had no idea about it. And when the email came out, it made it sound like people knew what was going on. And also, as this goes forward in planning, I'm wondering if any actual end-users who are stuck with all the work at the end of the line are going to be involved in this planning and giving feedback.
Good questions, thank you. First, to your suggestion about fixing tuition, there are a number of universities that are experimenting with this. If you know in a very considered way what your costs are going to be, it's possible to do that. I think it's a very good model, I agree with you, that planning is important for all of us, it's important for the families we serve. If it were possible to do that, I would be very much in favor of it. It's complicated in a more volatile environment, because it's hard to project those costs, but it's certainly an idea worth pursuing and thinking about. I do want to point out that, and I'm not saying this is a great model, but as the tuition costs increased, so did financial aid. So part of what that money, increased money was used for was making financial aid more generous. It's never enough, it's not enough, I totally agree with you, but I don't want you to think that that was done unmindful of the financial burdens it creates, it's just not sufficient. Employee morale, I can do no more than work as hard as I can on your behalf and on behalf of the institution and all the other leaders and colleagues do the same. It doesn't do any good for me to say that employee morale, I'm sure, will improve, because it'll only improve if you see results. I'm a very results-oriented person, talk is cheap, action is what matters, and so you can hold me accountable for that, within the confines of what's possible. And what's possible- And what's possible has to be collaborative, it's not something one person can do alone. So I don't expect you to have great faith unless you see the results. But I can tell you that I will work 24/7 to make sure those results come through. And most people who know me, know that when I'm determined to do something, I generally do it. So, I'll let you hold me accountable for that. Shared services? I don't know enough about the details, I certainly don't know anything about the New Hampshire model, and I don't know what people were doing here 10 years ago. I do think that if we were to build this system today, we wouldn't build five of everything. We would try and think about efficiency, because if we drive money into administration, it's money we're taking away from the classroom, from financial aid, from all the things that we need to do for students, for faculty growth, for, you know, all the core, the core mission of the university. But we need to be more efficient. For example, and this was true on the Amherst camp, when I arrived on the Amherst campus, and this is sort of what we see here today, pretty much every function was done on paper. If you wanted to know what a salary history looked like over 10 years, you couldn't go back more than about four, because all the rest was on handwritten index cards. No business today runs on handwritten index cards. It just doesn't. It's inefficient. It means that every piece of, every decision that's made involves a piece of paper, moving from one place to another physically. That's insane. In a digital world? We need to be more efficient in how we move information, so we can get decisions made faster and more accurately. And the three areas that have been chosen to work on to begin with, payroll, what do you call it, procurement and accounts payable, those are the kinds of transaction-oriented processes that should be ripe for that kind of modernization. And without it, we're just spending money on bureaucratic things that, you know, look like the 19th century. So I do think it's about time for us to try and modernize, so that we can be more efficient. On the Amherst campus, by the time I left, all personnel processes and the academic side were handled electronically. They were fast, they were efficient, they moved quickly, they were less burdensome, and that was the purpose. And over time, there was attrition of employees, we were able to do more with fewer people, because we could move things around faster. If people retired, we didn't need to replace them necessarily, because those processes were just that much more efficient. In this day and age, it's really hard to justify anything else, other than being maximally efficient when it comes to administrative expenses. And, that goes along with upskilling our employees. So this may, I hope, contribute to morale. When we bring in this new digital, this electronic system from Civitas, this is just one example, our advisors are going to learn how to use predictive analytics. That's a really important tool, that's an important skill for them. It's what a modern industry should be doing, to learn how to harvest data, display data, make decisions that are driven by data rather than anecdotes. But if you don't provide employees an opportunity to upskill and learn how to use that system, their skills are falling out of date. I expect that when our shared service colleagues are done with their work, the employees are going to be more skilled, they're going to learn how to do things more efficiently, it's going to make them more valuable. That's part of our mission as well. Upskilling should be part of our mission. I think we're over on this side now.
Hi, I'm Kelsey McCauley, I am chief steward for CSU, as well as a communications officer, and I'm an alum. So, my question to more Kathleen than to you, interim chancellor Newman, is, for FY19, you have our salaries as they are. Are you factoring in the projected bargaining unit deals that are now two years overdue, on top of what I would hope for my PSU members? A significant raise for everybody in that group? Because I know there's a very large discrepancy between CSU and PSU, and as somebody who would love to grow in my position, I would not even think about it, knowing I would have to take a pay cut. On top of that, I would also like to wonder, with the utilities, we could potentially, I know it's been brought up in bargaining, look at maybe closing the university to save some money, a couple extra days, maybe Black Friday when nobody shows up. We have skeleton crew, and people are showing up for three hours, if that. And I understand we have to keep the university running, but at what expense? To heat these buildings, which currently aren't really that heated, I know, what's the point, for one extra day? And on top of that as well, I would like to think that we have to look at the outsourcing of university jobs. I know I have union members that have their jobs outsourced, probably daily, that we haven't dealt with, because it's easier to outsource the job than to hire more staff, particularly in CSU, and unfortunately, particularly in our facilities department, which is extremely understaffed. Thank you.
All right. So, okay, so to start with, for the salaries, so we have built into the budget, so with the salaries, we build into the budget what the system, so there's uniformity around the, around what's in the budget. And we do have the collective bargaining increases built in. So we use the parameters, the state sets parameters for all of the collective bargaining, it was 2%, 2%, and 2%. So those are there, so people shouldn't feel that your budget in any way is going to be harmed by these negotiated pay increases. Those, the budgets will get adjusted, and we'll make people whole regarding the negotiated pay increases, as well as put through pay increases for those members of departments who may be non-union, within each of the areas as well. So, so that covers the cost of living that we have. Any other types of pay adjustments that are negotiated as part of the collective bargaining process? We work with each of the bargains, we will fund those. And we're not going to go to the table and make commitments that we're not going to fund. So if we can't fund it, we'll have that discussion at the table. And those of you involved with collective bargaining, know we regularly will have those kinds of discussions. So if it gets funded as part of the contract, that'll get funded, and the department itself shouldn't feel like it's being held harmed because of that. We would be putting that into your budget. Regarding utilities, we're always looking at ways to save on utilities. I mean, we have increased our utilities costs, because we have more buildings here right now than we used to have. We'll be accounting for getting rid of the utility costs for this building when it comes down. So we're constantly looking for that. I would say, as a state organization, there are requirements the state has about when we can and cannot be open, but we're certainly open to look at the schedule and see what we might be able to talk about and look at going forward in the future. So I think those are, and then regarding, you know, we regularly work with departments around workload and how we need to have that accommodated. We wouldn't be outsourcing anything without having discussions and meeting the collective bargaining requirements that we need to with our union representatives. And certainly, we look to see always, what's the most efficient way? A lot of times, we want to have our people do the work, because it's more efficient for us to have our own people do it. So it isn't just one size fits all, it really depends on the circumstances. And the university, I think, will be fully committed to meeting its collective bargaining requirements around that.
On this side?
Hi, my name's Maureen Dewire, I work in the history department-
Can you put the microphone up a little?
I work in the history department, my name's Maureen Dewire. And my question is that, a year or so ago, like, departments have been, being made more efficient by all the software packages that have been purchased, like the Oracle for HR Direct and Finance, the purchase, the Production FS, the software for procurement. And when, I mean, I don't understand what efficiency you're driving at. I mean, last year, when the employees, when they announced like, a cutback, they first offered the people, they first offered staff that were here more than five years, $20,000 bonus to leave. And then the people that they picked to leave, were told at the last minute, and they weren't, they weren't given anything except a severance. And I just don't understand why there's so much focus on this productivity among, you know, people who've already been made more productive to, like the, like the end. There has to be an end of how much productivity you can get from something.
I, I, I mean, I think we're trying to be more, I think we would think we'd realize that not every department's been affected the same during these times. So what we're really, with the shared services that the system is looking at, I would stress, we have folks from our campus at the table to help have discussions and figure out what that might look like. There can be some things that perhaps we do here, that every other campus does, that we can look to do. So, you know, right now, with the university system, they pay bills in one place. All of our bills get paid centrally. You know, another thing, maybe one campus takes care of. So it's really looking to see, based on the facts and circumstances, what makes the most sense. Some things we may decide, it's good the way it is and we want to keep it, but really to take a look at how we handle things administratively, to really make sure that we're operating in the most efficient way, so that we can really put the most dollars that we can towards mission. So, but it isn't just done in a vacuum. Our folks, the folks who are here doing the work, do get a chance to participate in what that ultimately looks like. And we do want to have something that's going to work here for our campus, as well as be able to be able to be part of the overall project.
Thank you. Over on this side?
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Edward Henry, I'm an academic advisor, I'm also a graduate school alum. I was a grad student on campus when the budget cuts came down and we started to lose our assistantships, and started losing more of our funding. I'm also one of the professionals who signs the withdrawal forms when a student wants to leave the university. So my question is on retention, and there's a very clear focus from upper administration about retention, but I didn't see any conversation around cost of attendance at the university. Reasons cited for leaving are often the increased tuition costs, again, the cuts in research assistantships and TAs for graduate students. There's also the lack of coverage for the MBTA, speaking about Amherst and competition from our sister universities. UMass Lowell just offered faculty, staff, and students free commuter rail passes from North Station, which puts them in direct competition with us. As staff, we have an extremely limited T benefit, and as a graduate student, I only had a T discount if I paid the $300 in August, when I had to also buy books. Also, one other thing I want to put in there for tuition assistance for students, is something around loan forgiveness opportunities. Is this something you're looking at? With the federal government removing loan forgiveness, I qualify for public service loan forgiveness, I should on paper, but that's been removed. So is there something the university can do to entice her students to stay?
Those are excellent questions. Let me start with the commuter rail. I'm totally enamored of that idea. I wish we could, in fact, have been talking with Kathleen about what we could do with the T. I know that this was, we approached the T once before, and were told that it would be millions of dollars, but that doesn't mean we should stop trying, because truthfully, I agree with my green colleagues that it would be much better for us to incentivize public transit. And, you know, when, if Bayside, if the Bayside negotiations go the way I hope they will, hopefully the state will invest in improving the JFK stop, the JFK-UMass stop, because it's, as you can tell if you, I go there every day, and the steps are falling apart. So I think modernizing and improving and making it less expensive to ride the T, that would be by far my first choice if we could get it. What Lowell did was increase student fees to cover that. And I, my understanding is that our campus debated this and decided, really, our students couldn't afford an increase in those fees. But, you know, it's socialized across thousands of people, and so that is a way of raising the funding to do that. I just think we have to be very careful about the fees that we hit our students with. But if you ask me whether I think it's a good idea, I think it's an excellent idea. Loan forgiveness, that is my favorite policy instrument, and it just destroys me that the federal government, that's, that's our government right now. I actually am going to campaign with employers on loan forgiveness, and favorable tax treatment for loan forgiveness, I think is a policy whose time has come. And around the country, because of tightening labor markets, you are seeing more and more employer interest in things like loan forgiveness, especially if it helps them stabilize their labor force. So I'm very enamored of that goal. I think we should, you know, that plus scholarships, we should do as much as possible to retain the support for our students. I also think we have to be, you know, very honest and careful about how many students we can actually support properly. That's an important decision for departments and deans to make. We should be, we should be setting some conditions that we pay attention to when we admit students, so that we're providing them with the wherewithal. I'm completely supportive of that, both on the graduate student side and elsewhere. Thank you for your questions. Yeah?
Hi, thank you. My name is Yemarie, and I'm an undergrad here, and I'm just wondering, I know there's going to be some parking increases, and you touched upon that a little bit, but I know there's been a petition going around, and I know I signed it, and I know a lot of people have signed it, and I'm just wondering, how do our voices about this matter in this situation? And how are you going to take that into consideration?
We're trying to keep parking fees as low as we possibly can. So, I mean, we are, at this point, offering discounted rates for students, as well as negotiating discounted rates with faculty and staff. Unfortunately, the garage is built, there are costs of the debt, particularly this year, you know, we've got $3.8 million of debt that we are paying, that we need to pay for. So if we don't pay for it out of parking fee, the goal with the parking fees is to have those folks who use our parking pay for those costs. If folks come here on the MBTA, you don't have to pay for these costs. I realize that's easier said than done, we are actively working to figure out other ways others can help us reduce some of these costs, pay for some of these legacy costs, as the chancellor mentioned. But I mean, there should be no reason why anybody in this room comes to campus and pays $15 in the garage, or $9 to the Bayside when the rates go up, because we will offer, we are offering discounted rates for students. Try to make it be as affordable as possible, and try to offer some different options to be able to come to campus.
One principle that I have told Kathleen has to hold is that our students are never going to pay more than our staff. That you can hold me to.
Thank you very much.
I wish we could, I wish we had a better way out of this, I really do. And we will keep campaigning toward that goal. In between, we've got a responsibility to take care of this budget. On this side.
Hi, my name's Eliza Wilson, and I'm an alum. I have three questions for you, interim chancellor. One, as Tom Goodkind mentioned in his remarks about the sale of the Bayside, you said, "If it was my choice, you know, what we would do with the proceeds?" So, if it's not your choice, what we, UMass Boston, does with the proceeds, whose choice is it?
No, what I meant, let me be clear, was if we, I would, my choice has to do with whether we have alternatives for paying for things like the debt service on the garage. It's not, I, it will be our discretion how to use the Bayside funds, but I would, I'm hoping that we will have the opportunity not to use it all up on filling up the substructure hole.
Okay, okay, thanks for clarification. Now, with, you're talking about going to the State House, I'm some, one of those alums I did as a student. We don't have a registered lobbyist here at UMass Boston, and to what I understand, the university doesn't either. So insofar as, you know, we, the alums, you, interim chancellor, can go to the State House, what is your plan for actually retaining a lobbyist on behalf of this university?
We have people who we hire as regular members of our staff, whose job is what we call government relations. They're not lobbyists in the normal sense of the term, but their job is to make sure that our university's interests are clearly articulated. You could call them a lobbyist, I suppose, they have a different job title than that, but we have a staff that's responsible for that, and we lean on them heavily, as does the system office. And by the way, so do our, some of our more senior alums, who are helping with us, helping us with making those points clear. We've got a lot of people waiting, so could you ask your last question?
Yeah, my last question is, and it's something you mentioned in the Boston Business Journal, which I thought was a great interview, by the way.
Thank you.
And you said here, going into the doors of CEOs, Oliver, Boston. What is your strategy for building those relationships, being new to Boston?
Well, again, I have help with that, fortunately, because if I had to depend on my own networks, which are primarily academic, we wouldn't get very far. I've been speaking with leaders, for example, of the New England Council, of the Boston Business Alliance, I have appointments coming up with the tech councils. There are a whole series of business groups that are very interested in hearing what UMass Boston is doing. And they have actually opened the door and welcomed me to come in and talk about our university, its strategy, its future, and its role in the economy. So there's no shortage of interest, but it's a big part of my job, as I see it, to get out into the business community and make it clear how valuable this institution is, and why they should be supporting things like loan forgiveness, scholarships, investment in faculty research. Over here. You know what, since we've only got like, nine minutes left, I'm going to suggest that everybody just ask their questions, we'll make notes on the questions, and then we'll try and volley back as far as we can. Because I want everyone to be able to ask.
Sure. Wally Soper alum, I work at the Labor Studies, I guess mine is a statement. You said why, one question was, why are we demoralized? It's because you're BSing us. You didn't show up at convocation, you didn't take the signatures, and I'm not very happy, and it seems like a privatization scheme. I'm second generation, going to school here, and I don't appreciate it. My students are getting tremendous debt, I graduate without a debt, I'm very upset.
Over here.
My name is Marie Ivanova, I'm on the faculty at the McCormick Graduate School. I would like to ask you about your strategy for internationalization. A lot of colleges and universities have internationalization as one of their top A lot of colleges and universities have internationalization as one of their top priorities. UMass Boston is recognized worldwide for what we can do, for what we are doing, for where we stand. And I didn't see it as one of your 10 goals. Is there a space for internationalization and for putting this university in the global sphere?
Thank you.
Chancellor, nice meeting you again. My name is Nathan Cooper. I work for Facilities. And thank you very much for saying you will come out and visit my organization, which I'm on a community development corporation, and we manage a lot of properties. So my question pertains to maintenance. We're doing a wonderful job. We're building buildings. We created more green landscape. We got more sidewalks. My question is, what is the plan to really manage this? I've been to a lot of the community forums. I participated in the Bayside Charette, but I feel that I've never got a response, how are we going to manage this? How are we going to do it? What is the plan? Do we have a comprehensive plan? I would really like to hear more about that as we move forward.
Quick, we got to leave here at 4 o'clock sharp for this class, so please, quick.
Sam Bartlett. We've heard that students and custodian and food staff workers have been charged higher rates even while the unions are still bargaining over parking fees. My question is, is that true and will they be reimbursed?
That is completely not true. The current rates for parking are still $6. We are working to, we're implementing the fare collection system with the garage that wasn't fully functional when the garage opened. When that is done, we will now notice the campus community, anybody who's in a collective bargaining unit who's not yet settled, we're negotiating with you and you stay at the current rates for the facilities that we've had until such time as we complete negotiations. And there'll be information for the other campus, the rest of the campus community about the rates at that time. So nobody's paid any more new fees as we stand here today, yet.
Last question.
Hi, thanks. My name is Muna Killingback. I'm a PSU member and staff member at the Center for Women in Politics and Public Policy. I have a question and a comment about the parking garage and the parking fees. First of all, the parking garage is a wonderful new facility, and it really makes getting to campus and getting to our offices much easier. So that, thank you for making sure that got done and opened. But I think it will create a real inequality if the parking garage is much more expensive than Bayside. Because a lot of us are working parents, and we need to try to really reduce the amount of time of our commute. We want to be able to, you know, work as long as we can and be home with our families as long as we can. And if the parking garage is $15 and Bayside is $9, it will be very difficult for a lot of the staff here to be able to afford that $15. And I think that $6 that we pay now, or whatever it is for the long-term parking, is really enough for us to pay to come to work. So, anyway. Yeah.
Okay, let me very quickly go through these questions, because we have five minutes before we need to clear out. So first, Wally, all I can do about your demoralization is to work as hard as possible to make this the best university it can be.
You chose a convocation and led the conference?
Excuse me, but I led convocation and spent quite a lot of time preparing for it, as did many other people, and I think it was a wonderful celebration. You may not agree, but that's my opinion. Second, about internationalization, I am totally committed to the international agenda. Having spent many, many years myself, both doing research overseas and running programs for students overseas, I would love to see us become a more, we are already an international campus with respect to our students and faculty, but creating programs that allow our students to go overseas and for us to receive more foreign students, I couldn't think of anything more important, especially in an international city like Boston. In terms of community forums, we are running community forums around Bayside. We have all the neighborhood associations coming here on the 25th in order for us to have an opportunity to speak directly to them. I'm getting out to visit with community organizations myself in an opportunity to get to know them. So if you have, Nathan, wherever you are, I forgot, up there somewhere, if you have other suggestions for how I can be more available, or we can collectively be more available, please do let me know. As far as inequalities are concerned, you know, again, I wish we didn't have to do this, but we do have to cover the costs of parking. And I think that the most important change that was made in my discussions with my colleagues after I arrived was develop a means-tested charging pattern. So the faculty and staff who earn the least, pay the least. That's the best that I think we can do, and I think it's the honorable thing to do. So, you know, that's what the Amherst campus does. I think it was a good model. It's the best that I think we can do to make sure we cover these costs. We don't really have much of a choice but to cover those costs unless we find another way through state appropriation. And if we do, we have promised that we will return to those rates and redo them. So we have every reason to keep campaigning for this. I do, you do. And if we're successful, we'll go back and do a rethink. But until then, I have a budget to manage, and that's what we're going to have to do. So colleagues, thank you so much for coming today. I really appreciate your time and attention.